Meeting of the Human Rights Committee to Order. It is Monday, January 25th, and it's hopefully close to 5 o'clock, which is when we were supposed to start. And I just need to make this announcement. The National School District is holding an emergency meeting pursuant. Is this what I'm supposed to read to Heather?
Yes, good.
Yes, right at the top there.
An emergency meeting pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, Section 8, an emergency order number 12, Section 3. Does that sound right, guys?
Yep. Huge good.
So the meeting is now called to order. And I guess I will call the role, Ms. Timmons.
Here.
And Mrs. Oden.
Here.
And myself. Also present are Jessica Brown, I hope I get everybody's name right, Heather Raymond, Dana O'Gara, the HR Director, and Tara Cancella, our wonderful administrator. Thank you all for coming. And so with that having said, I guess our first order of business is personnel recommendations. Do I have a motion from somebody?
Excuse me, Ms. Ziem.
Yes.
Paula Johnson is present also.
I'm sorry, Paula. I didn't even look down there. Welcome, we're glad to have you. Mrs. Johnson is also with us. So having said that, now can I get a motion?
A motion to accept the personnel recommendations.
Right. Is there any discussion from anybody, any comments, concerns?
You need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have to second it. So the item, Ms. Oden or myself, is dated June 25th, 2021.
Okay. And now, is there any discussion or comments concerned?
I have a question.
Okay.
For Ms. O'Gara. We have quite a few people who are resigning at the end of the year. I think there are 17, including one we got back in early January, a special ed teacher at South. And I'm just wondering if there is a motion to go back to hybrid, and there's a teacher here, or more than one, that would rather retire at that time than to go back. Are they still able to collect their sick leave money that they've accumulated?
No.
And do they not if they retire early?
They have to retire a binding letter of retirement by February 1st for the end of the school year to secure their severance.
Okay. Thank you.
And so February, it doesn't go by the board date now. It goes by February 1st, the calendar date. So on the next board packet, please expect that we will have more retirements.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Do we know, Mrs. O'Gara, how many we've had so far?
Yeah, Dottie counted correct. I think there were two in January.
Okay.
Right there.
I thought there was one, a special ed teacher, only because I know her.
Yeah.
I noticed that. But I, and I know there's 16 today, and I thought 16 plus one, so 17 or 18. If you know of another, it would be 17 or 18 at this point.
Yeah, there's a couple, they're coming in still every day, so.
Okay.
And how long, will you remind me how long they have? What, when is the last day?
February 1. If we average 20 to, we've been averaging, and over the past couple of years, 20 to 25. I think we're gonna go over that.
Mrs. Johnson, did you have a question?
No, we was just answered. Thank you.
Okay. Right, so.
Write your mind.
Having said that, if there are no more questions or concerns, we'll take the vote. I guess, Mrs. Timmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ziem?
Yes.
So they're passed. The second order of business was the job description for the superintendent of schools. And I would just like to say that I heard from Jessica Brown, I heard from Gloria Timmons, and I heard from Dottie Oden, who all three had changes that they would like to make to the document. Some not monumental, but changes, which obviously each change requires discussing. I had a concern, and I called the New Hampshire School Board Association. I spoke to the attorney there. I will, I remember his first name, because he's such a wonderful man and very, very bright. And my questions, he actually told me, I asked him if he had verbiage for some of the things that we wanted to do, that if he could give me, actually, we were looking for job descriptions. I thought it would be nice to have a job description for Manchester, because Manchester is very similar to Nashua. And as such, it might have more appropriate verbiage for us. Having said that, they did refer us to, in that question, they referred us to a website, which we've been researching on and off. Mrs. Oden, I asked her if she would do that for me, and she's been looking at that. In addition to that, I asked him if the, in one of our meetings, we had discussed how you track the time cards. It's not basically time cards, but basically how you track a person's time, when they're off and when they're not, you know, when they're on vacation and when they are working, and where that is put. Do you put it in, do you put it in the job description? Do you put it in a policy? Do you put it in a contract? And he said that he had seen it in several different places. He said that he didn't have a lot of verbiage for it, but that he did have one verbiage that he read to me, which was very, I don't want to say nebulous, but I want to say that it wasn't really, it was very general, very, very general. He said that he belongs to the National Association of School Boards, and that he actually sent an email, as I say, he's a wonderful man. He said that he had actually sent an email out to his board to ask them if they had verbiage, and how they had handled it, and what they would recommend. That was late, this, by the time he called me back, you don't call those people and they, I mean, I called this morning in like 9:15, and he got back to me at 2:00. And with the information he gave me, he said, as soon as I hear from them, if there's any other information that I can give for you, I will certainly send it to you. It was also, he did promise me that he would send me the general verbiage that he had read to me over the phone. He said that it was his opinion, that definitely something should be, at least he seemed to be saying that it should be in the contract, that usually in the contract, there are general statements regarding that kind of verbiage. So, and I see Mrs. O'Gara, so I think, did you have something you want to say, Dana?
A job description is a job description. Procedures don't typically go in there. Been doing job descriptions since the 1990s with Crotchett Mountain. I started out in HR, over 25 years. We do have a process, all the administrators, like if I wanted to take a personal day, I have to go into Kronos and request a personal day. So what I would do is, the proper way to do it is to tell the superintendent, who I report to, Garth, Jamal, whoever, I'm taking a personal day, because I need to do this. And I say, okay, and then I put it in Kronos, so that Dan and Derek, who handle all the administrators, knows that that's a personal day, when I don't punch, because I punch every day, so they know that I'm at work. So there is a procedure in place to track, and the system, Kronos goes to Lawson and tracks everybody's time. I can go into Lawson and print out a print, a report, just like that, on which sick days anybody took, which personal days, holidays, the whole thing. I can print it out in Kronos, and I can print it out in Lawson. Lawson is prettier.
Do I hear you saying that it's not, that the procedure is not anywhere? That it's an unspoken procedure?
No, it's a procedure that is part of the personnel payroll system. That's how we pay people. We pay people if they don't punch. We need to know if they took time off, and there's a application, more than one, that handles that whole process, and a team of payroll who does time and attendance. That's their job. It's a procedure.
But it's.
Probably in the business.
If I hear you, so this procedure, is it in, it's not in writing anywhere? It's just spoken, understood, that that's how it's done? Is that what you're telling me?
No, it's probably in the business procedures manual, the general.
Well, I would like to see the written, whatever it is, wherever it is, whatever it is, I would like to see it if it's in writing. That would be my request. Mrs. Johnson, did I see your hand up?
Thank you. Well, a couple of items here, I think. The superintendent we know works for us, and it should be clarified in here, basically. But, and take that away, as it may be, he's a top administrator, so he really works for himself. So who is he going to report to? He's not going to report to anybody in the administration, because he's the top person. So if he's going to take vacation times, or any sick days, or any personal days, is he gonna, does he punch in? Does he punch out? Does he punch to ask permission to take the days? Because he basically works for himself. He's the one on the top here. And so I'm just concerned with that. I think it needs to be clarified completely in a contract. It needs to be clarified in the description somewhere, because, you know, he works for himself, really. He is the top person. So I have some.
I'm definitely not disagreeing with you that he's the top person. When you say top person, he's the top person in the district, but he answers to us.
Yeah, I said aside from that. I said aside from that answering, but I'm saying, basically, he does the day, and it should be in there also, in the overhaul of responsibility, day-to-day operation. So I'm saying, yes, he does work for us, but I'm saying in the administrative role. He works for himself in the administrative role. He does not answer to Garth, or to anybody else underneath him. And I'm not meaning that derogatorily.
No, no, of course not.
Okay. But he doesn't answer to them. They answer to him. So that needs to be clarified, because on how is he going to take vacation? How is he going, he or she, going to, with the sick days, the personal days, with the punches? I mean, I don't know, does Dr. Mosley punch in or out? Whether, is Dr. Mosley any superintendent? Okay. But we don't know that, because we're not in administrative. So I think we need to find out, what does the superintendent do when they come to work, when they want to take vacation time? Do they have to request it, or are they taking it because they want to? And somewhere, it has to be in overall responsibility, the day-to-day operations, because that's what I think is kind of missing. And I just printed this out. I just knew about it, so.
You could put.
Thank you.
Excuse me, what did you print out?
The job description.
Oh, okay. We're talking about a different document. I see several hands, so if you finished, I'll.
Thank you.
So, Mrs. Timmons, did you want to say something? I think your hand was next. And Mrs. Raymond. You can't hear me?
Mrs. Timmons, you're on mute.
I just want to say what Ms. Johnson just said about it wasn't in the overall responsibilities. But the superintendents of National School will work together with the Board of Education for the Administration of the Educational System and for the Interpretation and Fulfillment of Functions, Primary Activities, and Responsibilities. So it's basically in there. That's all I want to say about that piece. And Dana, I want you to kind of speak on this, because I, I think when, I mean, you can correct me, when a person takes time off, it is someone else approved that time. Is that correct or not?
So when the superintendent takes time off, Dan handles the superintendent, Derek handles the rest of the administrators. But it really goes, even though Derek handles my time off, I ask my boss, and then I put it in there. If you want it somewhere, the best place to put it, if you want a procedure for the superintendent to ask for time off, the best place that you can put it is in his contract. It doesn't really go in the job description. You put it in the contract, because in the contract, you guys usually put down how many sick days and vacation days and personal days he can have. So you could put something in there, I don't know, you can have him check.
Exactly.
Why you, and let you know, or there's a process in there that, you know, he has let the board know that he's on vacation, or he's taking a day off, or something like that.
That's exactly what the New Hampshire School Board Association attorney told me, that he personally had only seen it in a contract. But he did say that he had sent out a message to the, to the national, to all of the national associations throughout the United States, and that he would, that if anybody was doing it differently, he would get word back from them. And probably there are those doing it different. But I don't, I would like to say that I am certainly not suggesting that Dr. Mosley abused this. I will suggest to you, I won't suggest, I will say to you, that over my time on the board, I have seen it misuse several times, but it was not Dr. Mosley. And I'm saying that, because speaking of it during this time, it may appear that I am saying that, and I am not, because I do not think that was the case at all, and I certainly wouldn't want, I wouldn't want anybody to think I was suggesting that. Mrs. Raymond, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Ms. Ziem, and thank you for clarifying that. I don't want anyone to get the wrong impression here, because it sounds to me like we're talking about a few different things kind of jumbled in together. One is that we need to work on, I'm saying "we" as in this committee, and "we." We need to work on getting the superintendent's job description edited and up to date, so that it can be posted appropriately, so that the search committee can get started. And two, we're talking about how people track their time during this pandemic time, when people are working from home and not in the office. And so I guess my question is probably for Ms. O'Gara. She explained how people are tracking their time when they're coming into a physical building, and I know some of our staff are coming into physical buildings. But for those who aren't, or those who are quarantining, because they must quarantine, but are still working remotely, how, is there a procedure? Do you need a policy? You know, because I think the board has been hit with some questions about this, and we realize that we don't have an answer.
So the administrators can go right into Kronos on our computers and put in our time. I think Tara can do that too, right Tara? You can punch in from your computer?
Right. That started when we left and we went remote.
Yep.
But prior to that, we could only do it from the building.
Now, not everybody can do that. All the principals, and the directors, and central office can do that. The teachers don't do that. So there, the secretary at the school manages their time and attendance, and moves that information over to our payroll department to process the payroll.
But that's a lot of work for some of the secretaries in some of the bigger schools. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Timmons?
Ms. Ziem, shouldn't we focus now on the job description itself? Because that's what is on the agenda, and if we want to go into other businesses, after we talk about the job description? Because we've got several different boards going.
I'm not sure.
And we've got to focus on the job description, so we can get that out, or do something with it as soon as possible, so the committee can work on hiring the superintendent.
I am not sure, Mrs. Timmons, in answer to your question, that this is not part of the job description. The material that Will read to me sounded like it could be in the job description. Basically, when you look on this job description, it says work year, or something like that.
Yes.
And then it says 12 months. What he read to me, the generalized statement that he read to me, basically said, like from 8 to 5, 5 days a week, unless there is business that goes over above and beyond, you know, like when he asks if he attends PTF meetings, when he comes to the school board meetings, when he goes to, I mean, obviously, he doesn't have a regular, in my view, he doesn't have a regular 8 to 5 job. Obviously, he's not, he doesn't work a time card, like my husband was monthly, and he did what he had to do to get the job done, which is what I think we're saying the superintendent does. He has to do. So I personally would like to wait until we get information from, from the New Hampshire School Board Association. If we're going to avail ourselves of their expertise, and I have come to greatly respect them, I had another cause, I just recently, where I called the, well, I know what it was. I was asking him about special education, and I called Will for that. And he gave me a greater understanding than I've ever had of it, because, because that's, he has great expertise, which we should lean on heavily. Having said that, I have no problem going through this job description. What I do have a problem with is if we're going to rush this, and do it under the guise of, we've got to do this in 10 minutes. I don't think you do a good job in 10 minutes, and this goes back to my original statement, that these meetings before a meeting are not, they're not healthy. I don't like being on a dime. I don't like being told, you've got 20 minutes, and it has to be spit out in 20 minutes, because I think that causes mistakes. And mistakes can be very expensive. I understand that time is of the essence. But I also understand that doing it correctly, then you only have to do it once, and you have it correct, and everybody has a voice in it, and it's done well. So that would be my position on that. Mrs. Raymond?
Thank you.
And then Mrs. O'Gara, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, she raised yours first, but then she raised it, you know.
I just, I guess I have a question on that. Our main board meeting starts at 6:00, but I don't know if you wanted to have time in between. Also, oh shoot, I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. I wanted to know if you wanted to ask Ms. Cancella to schedule you another time for HR meeting?
Yes.
Or, if, or, or and, if we ought to go ahead and schedule a preliminary superintendent search committee meeting, and perhaps work on it there? And that's completely up to you.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that, Mrs. Raymond. I would suggest to you, I thought right from the get-go, that the superintendent's search was an important enough event, that it really, see, I feel that there are nine board members, and I, if I were, if I weren't on this committee, I would still want to be part of, that's such an, that's our leader. That's, that's somebody that we all need to come together and support. We need to get behind this individual, and as a team, work for the best interest through him, with him, as a district. So I don't have a problem with what you're saying. That would, I just don't, I just don't think that calling this meeting before another meeting, which promises to be a long meeting, it just makes the night longer, and it makes your patience shorter, and your ability to think clearly and make rational, good decisions based on analytical information. I just think you can only cram so much into one, into one meeting. And in my view, we've crammed too much for quite a while now, and I think it's caused us, but that's, that's all in my opinion. Mrs. O'Gara, did you still have something you wanted to say?
Yeah. So all administrators are salaried, or what we call not exempt. So they're exempt, they're exempt from overtime. So all salaried exempt personnel work more than eight hours a day. It's an expectation in our culture.
I know.
You know?
Thank you.
So what we can put, instead of, we put, so we have a lot of different schedules in the school district. We have people who work 180 days, we have people who have worked 199 days, we have people who work 214 days. So that's why we use, when we say 12 months, we mean you're a full-year employee. So we could say that in a different way, we can, but, but the position itself, and other administrator positions are categorized as exempt. And it's in the personnel and payroll database, and it goes by a set of rules from the Department of Labor, about who's exempt and who's not exempt. If you look in the handbook for the non-affiliated, we have a grid in there that tells you, out of those employees, who is exempt, and who is not exempt, and what is their schedule. Because we have so many schedules in the National School District, in different pays, some parents are paid 37 pays, you know, the administrators are 26, teachers are 22 or 26. We even have some of the secretaries that they only work during the school year. So we have very different, so we'd like to know what the schedule is. But we can say that in many different ways.
Thank you. I'm not disagreeing with you, Mrs. O'Gara, and if it appears I am, I apologize. All I'm trying to say is that, this, to me, to even, when I started looking at this superintendent's job description, I had questions on almost every paragraph, ways that I thought it could be clearer, that it could say, that it could be more explanatory. And I believe that when people have parameters, even if they're only conscious reminders, they are, they're good things to have. And I, I think, I think we should have, we should have a full meeting. I think there are other issues that also could be discussed at that meeting, things that, that I don't think you do a good job on in 45 minutes. Jessica, I'm sorry, I didn't see you holding your hand. I wasn't ignoring you, I apologize.
I agree with you, it seems like there's, this conversation's going to take a little bit longer. If I can request, there are three pending proposals from some companies who have sent them to us to help us with superintendent search, and they're kind of waiting for some information to come back, to see if we could set up some interviews, to see if they match our criteria and our budget. So if I could request, when the committee chooses to schedule their next meeting to discuss the superintendent job description, if it could be kind of soon, so that we can get the ball rolling on that? They, all three companies had mentioned that right now, starting pretty much February through the end of the school year, is kind of the primetime season for shopping, and I think if we miss that window, we'll be looking at an extended period of time. So just as, if the committee would consider making the next meeting kind of soon. Thank you.
I think that goes to Mrs. Raymond's suggestion. If we're going to have a superintendent search of the whole group, or if we're going to do it under HR, I, so, and Mrs. Heather, you are the chair, Mrs. Heather, Mrs. Raymond, excuse me, you are as the chair, I think that would be your call.
I think, Ms. Ziem, there's a policy that says the superintendent's search is the entire board. We can change the policy if we want to, but I believe that's, that's in the policy presently.
I didn't know it was in the policy, but I think that's a good policy, personally. So were you aware of that, Mrs. Raymond?
No, I was not. I'm going to look up that policy right now. I know that there are some members who are not particularly interested in being on the superintendent's search committee, so with luck, we can make sure we always have a quorum.
I don't think you'll have any problem, though, because, look, tonight, we have a quorum, and it's, it's just a committee, so I really don't think, I don't, I don't see that as being problematic. There might be an instance when you'd have to, but I, and I do agree with Mrs. Brown, and this week appears to me to be a good week, because we don't seem to have too much on the calendar. Am I wrong, Tara? Can we fit something in this week?
You have it? Yep, we have availability this week, and we have availability next week.
And do you know what the availability is already, or?
I believe the rest of this week is free. We only had tonight for meetings, and next week, there are no meetings scheduled, except for on Tuesday, you have a training, so.
So, so, could we, could I suggest to you, Mrs. Raymond, that going, assuming, I have to assume that Mrs. Oden knows she's, she's pretty good with those policies. Having said that, you can certainly research it after the meeting. Having said that, you can certainly research it after the meeting. But you can go ahead and set up, I mean, the sooner the better, going to Mrs. Brown's point. But obviously, you may have to make sure that everybody can do it, you know. But then in addition to that, those of us who have already looked at this job description, we could send our, we could send our, I have mine in writing, so I could send mine. And and I know Gloria sent me some in writing and I believe Jessica sent me some. So we could all send those to her and have her look at them.
I'm meaning Heather or I'm meaning Dana?
No, I'm meaning Mrs. Raymond. But I'm assuming that Mrs. Raymond is going to chair the committee. And and I guess that's not the case because you've, I guess now you've said that maybe somebody else will chair it. I'm just saying that, you know, we could, whoever is going to chair it, that would be the perfect place to send them so that they could all be looked at. I think then obviously get copies of them all out to everybody.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Have no problem with that.
I keep seeing your your mouth move, Heather, but I'm not sure what.
Sorry. No, I think that's fine. Yes, I think that that's fine. I sent a note to Ms. Kinsella asking her to schedule it and let us know. I have some proposals for an agenda, which basically what you were just talking about, I just wrote down.
Okay.
So.
And then Mrs. O'Gara?
I just want to bring to your attention that the qualifications from, for the job in this job description comes directly from the New Hampshire Education Regulations for eligibility as a superintendent. And also, a lot of this reflects what's in the regulations for superintendent. They have ED 30201, I think it is, duties of superintendent.
And and that, I think, if I remember correctly, Mrs. O'Gara, that's clearly spelled out in this job description. And I I hope, I'm sure that most of our board members would recognize that we, that we don't have the ability to change our S and S or 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 regulations that are set by powers much higher than we are. So, but if if anybody questions it, you can certainly, why don't we contact Mrs. Raymond and give her that nightmare? So if anybody challenges it, or Mrs. O'Gara, there you have it, Dana. So just anybody but me, right? So anyway, so are we in agreement?
Yes. Can, can, can I just ask?
Yes, Dottie, of course.
Superintendent search involves money. As many of you know, we're not floating in money. Should this go through finance and have Mr. Donovan tell us if we have the money to pay a search firm, quite frankly?
Mrs. Raymond?
In the note I just sent Ms. Kinsella, I asked that she invite Mr. Donovan to that meeting as well as Ms. O'Gara. I also suggested Ms. Hines, our communication director, because she's been through several superintendent searches as well. And she's really good with words, frankly. She's, she's extremely, I don't know, she's good at that stuff and she's much better than me. So I I think that would answer the question, Ms. Oden, if those people are available.
Thank you.
So, all right, so so we know now that that we're going to, we're going to go to, we're going, we're going to have another meeting this week and you guys are going to take care of that, right? And then we can hold, we can hold back on our suggestions for the superintendent search? Or do you want us to forward them to you? I'm talking to you, Mrs. Raymond, sorry.
I put myself, wait, I'm on my, okay. I had put myself back on mute, so I apologize, these ridiculous Zoom things that we should be experts at by now. I am indifferent. You can send them to me and I will consolidate them and ask. I can, I can consolidate them, but I wonder if it's worth just having individuals keep their suggestions and.
Present.
And present them, not necessarily as a motion. But like in the policy committee, someone would say, well, I think this sentence should read, you know, X, Y, Z. And then they read what they think and everyone says, oh, that's a great idea or no, we totally disagree. And I think we ought to start with Ms. O'Gara's proposal and work from that instead of starting from some edits that have been suggested and working kind of backwards. Does that make sense?
I will say, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I do think that I, under traditional circumstances, if we were meeting in person, I think that would be the appropriate way to do it because we would pass our sheet of paper, the edits we'd make around the room, we'd bring photocopies and share them with the group. I think meeting remotely, it's very difficult because we'd be relying on screen shares and we'd be relying on reading a sentence off a sheet of paper, hoping that someone's going to hear it remotely accurately the first time. I'm not entirely sure that waiting to meet in person to share those edits would be the best idea. I think maybe we might consider sending them ahead of time so at least people could read the edits. I think that could be helpful because it'd be very difficult to do that remotely, in my opinion.
I think you make a good point. Obviously, Zoom, as Mrs. Raymond already said, it's not your ideal meeting. I, I find it painful, but but anyway, so.
But my only concern with that is making sure that we do not violate the right to know law. So communications and discussions via email, if there's more than a quorum of us involved in them, e- even if there's less, it violates the.
The right to know.
The right to know. I mean, it doesn't, yes, the heart of the right to know.
No, that was what Will told me. He said if it is a substantive discussion, it should be, it should be noticed so that everybody has an opportunity. Can you, see, I ask myself, why would anybody want to listen to anything you have to say, Sandra? But the truth is that that they want to hear what we all have to say because we all have a vote. And that vote in its, as a quorum, makes up the policy. And and those policies directly affect the children. The emails that we're getting from the parents are just so hard. They're heartbreaking. This is the way I look at it. So, okay, so is there, if there's no further business, does anybody have anything? Mrs. O'Gara?
I just also wanted to mention that this format is approved by the Board of Education.
Okay.
Okay. Mrs. Raymond?
I just wanted to know if we could have a very, very brief non-publics under RSA 91832B and A.
We have a quorum, but the whole board is not here and I don't know if they were noticed. So would that make it?
It don't need to be noticed.
Right. This is a committee meeting, so you can go into non-public in a committee meeting. Heather is not on the committee, so one, I hear myself have to go into non-public. Okay, so I, I moved to go into non-public under RSA 91833, A33, Roman numeral three.
A3, no, Roman numeral two, A and B.
Do I get a second from Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
So how do you vote, Gloria?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Oden, did I hear a yes?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it's unanimous. We are, do I say we are now? We're not until the TV is off, are we?
Well, you could say we are. And then we wait one second for him to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I really appreciate it.
No. I'd like to reconvene this meeting of the HR committee and I believe we have a motion. Do we want, Mrs. Timmons, are you ready with that motion or Mrs. Oden?
I'd like to move to seal the minutes.
We have to seal.
Are we out yet?
Seal, thank you.
Okay. A second?
Okay.
That's to seal the minutes. All right, Mrs. Timmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mrs. Zim, yes. So the minutes are sealed. Now we need the second motion. Mrs. Timmons?
Yes, I moved to send that superintendent job description to the search committee.
Second.
And so we're going to take the vote, Mrs. Timmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zim, yes. So it's unanimous. And so is there any other business to come before this committee? Anybody need to share anything? Seeing none, do I get a motion? Mrs. Timmons?
Yes, I moved to adjourn.
A second?
Uh, Mrs. Timmons, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it's unanimous. Thank you all for keeping me straight.
And we adjourn at 5:50.